Good evening. It is 6:30 PM, Monday, September 20th, 2021. This is a Carney Board Call Me Meeting. Call me meeting to order.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Shirley, have you had a chance to take a roll?
I have taken a roll. Everybody is present and you have a call.
Before we start with the consent agenda, I do want to let everybody know that this morning at 9:24 in the morning, staff received a written request from the applicant, Gary Seiler, to remove the new pond amendment item from the public hearing document this evening. So just an FYI, per request of the applicant, the item has been removed. So we will not have the public hearing 6B this evening at the applicant's request. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Or do you see the consent agenda? Any questions or items of discussion on the consent agenda this evening? Seeing no questions or discussion, can we entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second set?
All in favor?
Aye.
The consent agenda passes. Thank you. Move on to Mayor's remarks. Only item I have to discuss this evening under Mayor's remarks is I do have a resolution for the Jesse James Festival Committee. The Jesse James Festival just completed their 50th year and has been an important part of the culture for this 50 year. Encloses a proposed resolution of the board congratulating the festival committee for the perseverance and commitment to promote our community through this annual celebration. I'd like to offer my congratulations to Dan Colt and the rest of the Jesse James Festival Board and all their volunteers for their efforts. Mr. Administrator, if you could read the resolution?
A resolution recognizing the Jesse James Festival's 50th year anniversary and congratulating the festival committee on its outstanding service to the city. Whereas in 1970, the Carneys, Carney Merchants Association and more particularly Fanny Shanks did conceive and plan the first Jesse James Days Festival. And whereas during the 1970s, the event did flourish under their leadership, becoming an annual event and sponsoring country music shows involving Barbara Mandrell, Shoji Tabuchi, Don Lyman, and many other known entertainers, well-known entertainers. And whereas in 1981, under the leadership of Keith Doss, Chasten Parks, and Rich Weber, the festival was incorporated as not-for-profit and commenced hosting the United Rodeo Association's championship finals, moving from April to the third weekend in September of each year. And whereas during the 1980s, the festival continued to be affiliated with the rodeo and other events, moving locations from West Major Street, Mr. Dell's food site, to Gary Shank's Major Place property in 1988. And whereas in 1992, under the leadership of Tom Sloan Jr., the festival committee did acquire the Jesse James Festival grounds. And whereas during the 1990s, the festival did grow and mature in its new location, expanding their event schedule to include activities over a two-week period. And whereas in 1998, the festival grounds were purchased by the City of Carney at the urging of Alderman Tom Miller to develop a park, then the city did grant a perpetual agreement for the festival to continue its annual event. And whereas during the next two decades, the Jesse James Festival has continued to expand its programs and has become a Carney tradition, celebrated as a holiday by our community. Now therefore, the mayor and Board of Aldermen do resolve to congratulate the Jesse James Festival on its 50th year celebration and does commend President Dan Colt and all the members of the Jesse James Festival Committee for their resolve and commitment to promote an annual festival and parade designed for the entertainment and enjoyment of our community and our visitors.
Congratulations. Yes, I'll for a vote on what? We entertain a motion to approve the resolution as presented.
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The post. Congratulations. Mr. Colt is here. I would be happy to present him with the framed copy of the passed resolution. And anybody else that might be included on the picture? I know Jerry is also involved with committee or anybody else that would want to be in.
Very good. Good for good partners, a long time.
Go right on up there and face out this way if you don't want to.
Go on by me.
Yeah, go right up. Yeah, and then we're going to have a speech by you up here if you want to say anything.
All right, good. Okay.
Step down.
All right.
Okay.
You know.
Congratulations, Dan.
Oh, yes. This is a good group. Ready? Go a little closer. And muck out. My pictures are taken. Thank you. We'll share it with them. They're online, listening to us now, Danny, Donnie.
Oh, good.
They do, they do cover us, so.
Good.
That picture to them?
I will.
Very good. Very cool.
Uh-oh. We don't have a generator here, Dan.
There's a reason behind it.
Are we still with you? Ryan, can you hear us? Ryan, we've had some power outages.
Loud and clear. We're good.
We're loud and good? Still okay?
Don't broadcast.
We appreciate that you appreciate us. Especially with all the history that was brought up in this resolution is pretty amazing because there's a lot of people that deserve credit for what has happened over the years. Don't want to forget them. My name's on this thing, but I tell you what, my name wouldn't be on it weren't for the folks that support me, people on the committee, Columbus, you guys. Very much appreciated and thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you. That would be a good time if you guys want to excuse yourself. It looks like the rain has lightened up. If you'd like to stay for the rest of the business, you're more than welcome to do that as well.
And Terry, you've got a lot of experience. Do you want to say anything? Would you like to say anything about recollections or anything?
No, that's okay. I appreciate it. Thank you. Solid group effort, sending in the parks. Eric does a great job with this staff. We appreciate your help.
Thank you.
You did a great job. Thank you.
Thanks, gentlemen.
Take care.
Move on to Administrator's report.
Mr. Mayor, we have with us this evening Nathaniel Thomas and Rob Wilson to present the 2021 audit. I asked them to do this online because they did such a good job when we met with them on Zoom on our Friday morning meeting. I, they took about 15 minutes and I said, the board probably would like it about half that length. So it doesn't have to be that way, but we did have a big agenda and I was respecting the board's time when I mentioned that. So although there doesn't appear to be a big turnout for hearings, so maybe that won't be bad. Anyway, Nathan, if you'd like to see if you can screen share and introduce yourself. And David, can you make, or maybe they'll highlight when they start speaking.
All right. Well, thank you very much, Jim, for the introduction. Can somebody just please confirm that you can actually see the audit report document that I've shared?
Yep. If you'll make it as big as possible, that's, we'll appreciate that too.
Yes, sir, absolutely. Well, to hit the ground running here, as Jim said, we had the opportunity to meet with the mayor and Jim and the department heads on last Friday morning and kind of go through this audit report in a little bit more detail, as you might imagine by us being here this time of year. We've concluded the annual audit for the financial statements as of the fiscal year end, March 31st to 21. We've prepared the report. We're here seeking the board's approval to issue the report in full. And the relevance of kind of our timeline here is the state auditor's office does prefer that each municipality files their audited financial statements within six months and the end of September here, and about a week and a half is that deadline. So we've got plenty of time to get that done. So I'll dive in here. I agree with Jim. It's very useful to go through in this format because I can kind of steer you where we need to be as this document is rather robust at 68 pages. But we'll get through it here pretty quickly and feel free to speak up or somebody flag me down if anybody has a question. All right. So I'm going to focus here in the actual report itself. Our opinion paragraph here is the most relevant. I will summarize. It basically says that the financial statements as presented for the year end, March 31st to 21, are accurate and in accordance with US GAAP, which is accrual basis of accounting, which is the preferred method in governmental accounting. So this is a clean or an unmodified opinion, which is what you're looking for when you engage an independent third-party audit firm like ours to come in. I'll just remind the board that the books of the city and the financial statements are kept on a cash basis. So purely money in, money out, right? Disbursements and receipts. So we've been engaged to come over the top, as we always have been, to do that accrual conversion. So what we really do, the best way to summarize it is we go look out 60, 75 days after year end and we try to get our arms around all money that was received over that couple, two and a half months that should have been attributable to the year end that we're auditing, as well as any money that was paid out, you know, on the inverse of that. And we identify those by fund. We allocate those appropriately and that's how we prepare the financial statements that we're presenting to you today. Moving forward here to those financial statements, I'm really going to focus on this, this top level view. It's the most meaningful, the statement of net position. The reason I say it's the most meaningful is because it's got everything in it. As we go through the report, we get a little bit more detailed, but it doesn't roll up to the summary as efficiently. So as the report shows here, we've got two columns, a governmental activities and then a business-type activities. I just ask you to think of the business type as your water and sewer, which you guys are all too familiar with. And then we've got totals. So I'll work through this kind of top to bottom, really, like I said, focus on the numbers on this page. And then we'll get into a little bit of meat in the notes and we'll move forward here. So from a cash standpoint, very strong year, finished the year with 16.4 million in cash. That was an increase of just shy of 6 million year-over-year. It's not all, you know, what exactly it looks like on the surface. I mean, the money did increase that way, but you obviously had some debt issuances in the form of some 2020 go-bonds, as well as Alliance Park lease payable. And then were able to refi the 2013 sewer clarifier for a 2020 issue of that. So we had some influx of money. As we know, that money is sitting there to be invested in the form of capital assets, whether that be infrastructure or equipment, buildings, you know, repairs, that type of stuff. So it is there and you'll see as we go through this report that there was very heavy investment in all of those areas. As we move to the receivables, taxes receivable are really just the standard. Not a ton of movement in that. I think it went up about 20 grand year-over-year to 340,000 at year-end. Like I said, that's just money coming from the state and from the county. And it's a timing issue there that is received shortly after year-end. Accounts receivable, this represents, the 50,000 figure in government represents just trash collections. As you imagine, when you're providing a service like that, there's a lag from the billing to the actual time of collections. So that's going out and grabbing the money that you guys as a city collected in April and identifying that as March year-end. Same thing for the business type of 313,000 of accounts receivable. That's your water and sewer for a total of 364. In note receivable, 270,000 flat. That is the Westside CID. Obviously, there's a service on it, debt service, not debt service, but payments on it to the tune of, I've got that right here, 61,000. I think it's 64,000, a little bit gets allocated to interest. So we did have a decrease in the, in the principal amount of that down to 270 at year-end. Capital assets, big investment. We put about 20 million in governmental assets that were invested in capital assets, primarily, you know, the I-35 interchange and the other projects, Lions Park, as I mentioned earlier. And then business type had an investment of about 1.7 million. These are cumulative balances, right? Anytime you're seeing 51.7 million, we do keep the depreciation schedule and depreciate that each year and, and, excuse me, record that appropriately. Net pension asset, this is from your loggers. You've got two pension plans, both the general and the police. The, really, the important number here is this 221,000. That's a good thing. It's recorded as an asset. It basically means that your pension funds are both above water and in a strong position and actually have a surplus at this point in time. Deferred outflows, as well as deferred inflows and liabilities, those are all pension-related and I'm not really going to hit on those in detail. We just record, record those from the actuary that we work with at loggers. Liability is relatively flat from an AP standpoint. That's your regular, just operating overhead expenses, 506,000 at year-end. Accrued interest, 111,000. That's just really true enough from the, the amount attributable to this fiscal year for those interest payments that are going to be made shortly after year-end. Customer deposits is for water and sewer, 237,000 at that point in time. And then long-term obligations, probably the best place for me to talk you guys through this is in the notes because I've got a little schedule that reconciles the activity. So I'll probably punt on that until it gets to that point. So lastly, net position, really, you've got it in three categories. Invested in capital assets, 773,000, this first column, that's the governmental. That is really your capital assets that are being depreciated, net of the debt in that same column to get to that 773. And then in water and sewer, 9.5, almost 9.6 million there. Restricted for the various department or purposes. And then unrestricted, as the name implies, can be used for any purpose, 10.2 million. Good, strong net position there and unrestricted in government and 2.9 million at year-end in water and sewer, or a total of 13.1 million. I'm going to pause real quick since I threw a lot at you there before I kind of get into the notes. Does anybody on the board have any questions or anything they would like to discuss at this time?
I'd like to just point out to the board that to where our net pension amount is still positive, it's about half of what it was this time last year. So just a reminder that with the volatility of markets and just to pay attention off to and appreciate you guys, it's on your radar as well.
Very good point. All right. I'm going to, this is the statement of activities. Really, the relevant number here is the total increase. 5.3 million in change in net position allocated between government of 3.8 and water and sewer of 1.48 million, or a total of 5.3. You know, on a percentage basis, almost 20%, not quite, you know, 17, 18%, let's call it increase. But as I said, obviously, that was intentional by some of these debt issuances to get some, some liquid cash in to be able to invest in these projects. So you've kind of got that war chest, if you will, as you go through and execute on investing in that infrastructure. All right. So I'm going to skip through the other financial statements with the exception of this one. As I said, that first view that I talked you through, that's everything. It gets more detailed and by that I mean it isolates government. It isolates the general fund from the various major and non-major funds. But the numbers all roll up to what I just walked you through. The one thing here I do like to call out, statement of assets and liabilities for agency funds. There's really three categories here. Think of this as money that is held by the city on behalf of others. And all I mean by that is the activities, the ins and outs, aren't recorded. But this is just a snapshot in time at year-end, how much money was held for these purposes. Muni Court, very small number, just north of 2,000 there. Road District, 205,000. And then Community Improvements, CID's, 1.07 million for a total of 1.27 at that point in time. Moving forward here, it's a little bit smaller, just to really so I get the right landing spot and then I will hone you back in here. Okay. So here, note one, the very top, breakdown of cash, total cash position, cash in investments is 16.4 million. Really, three categories as shown here. Deposits and your traditional checking accounts and money market accounts, 10.1 million. CDs totaling 5.6. It is important to note that it was a focus area to invest in CDs during the fiscal year. So we did see a substantial bump in that balance. And then short-term investments held in trust, 684,000. That's allocated between BOK and Moser. All right. So long-term debt, entering the year, you had two go or government obligation bond issues. The 2015 and 2018 did another issue of the 2020 series for just shy of 21 million. I think it's 20.8 million. And there was a principal payment made on that. So if we look in this general obligation bonds column right here, beginning of the year, 10.1 issued the 20.8 I mentioned. When it says retired, that's just principal payments, regular debt service per the amortization schedule, 1.6 million to arrive at your go-bonds balance at year-end of 29.3 million, let's call it. Revenue bonds is just water and pollution control bonds. No new issuances on that, 185,000 paid on it, down to a balance of 400 at year-end. Moving to what's identified as your other debt structures, primarily lease payable. Let me get to that right here. All right. So we had a couple of things go on, and I mentioned this in the open. From a government activities column here, we did have a new one for the Lions Park of 1.093 million, which obviously was being invested there, as well as we did refinance the 2013 clarifiers for 2020 issuance. Really, I mean, the reason you guys executed on that as a board is because there was a ton of money to be saved there, both from a, just an outflow of cash as you service that debt, as well as an interest rate standpoint. So a very strong decision to do that. All right. Let me try to get through this here. Pension, as I mentioned, 221,000 asset. The mayor's correct that it did have a substantial decrease. Really, we got to watch, you know, we don't necessarily control it, but it is very closely tied to the economy, what the markets are doing from an investment return standpoint. And it is rather volatile and can have rather substantial swings year-to-year. But you guys are still in a great position at this point. All right. Property taxes, we do obviously go look at what the levy rate is, as well as the assessed valuation of property. And then you did collect from a cash basis, 1.7 million of property taxes in the year. Wag on my mouse. Apologies. All right. From a capital asset standpoint, this is the easiest way to see it. I'm going to run you through in totals here. So this top section is governmental. This column right here, it shows the 19.02 million. That's your governmental additions. You can see allocation between infrastructure, buildings, improvements, machinery and equipment, but does total 19.02 million. Too small?
Can you make it bigger?
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
Make it bigger. There you go.
All right. 19.02 million was the investment, which, as I said, was very substantial. Depreciation on that, that's both in the form of what the additions were for the current year, as well as things that had been added and were being depreciated from prior years, 1.1 million in the governmental realm. Then in the bottom, we get to the business type, which is your water and sewer, of course. 1.76 million invested in additions and then depreciation on those capital assets of 500,000. And then we do have a further breakdown kind of as we allocate that by the different departments. Then, not going to go through these in detail, but as I said, we really get a lot of line items here that you can see it by fund if you see fit. These are the non-majors, pages 57 and 58 to roll up to, scheduled earlier that feeds into that document I walked you through. And then we've got the general funds, which are 10 funds. The general, of course, sales tax, park capital, cemetery and park, which again, is just kind of a feeder document for those totals. And then at the very back of the audit report, we go into some budget and actual comparisons by fund, starting with the general fund and then really working our way through all of those. So if somebody sees fit, they can go and see what those budgeted numbers were versus what the actuals were. You know, one thing of note is we know the interest rate environment hasn't exactly been great. So, you know, interest income, while it's a relatively small amount in the, in the big picture for the city, the return from an interest standpoint that had been budgeted for obviously wasn't realized. But unfortunately, you guys are not alone in that. That's just the reality of the situation.
Can you blow those bigger so they, so they can see those numbers?
Yeah.
I made them look at our, our screens only. I don't have computer laptop setup for them. I should have done that.
No, you're fine, Jim. Okay. So from a general fund standpoint, for example, interest was budgeted at 33,000. And again, this is a budgetary basis. So there's some accruals that come in and some different views, but only 792 was actually realized by the end of the year from a receipt standpoint. And then we, we allocated out by the different departments, general, public safety, solid waste, parks and rec, community development. So you've got this first column here is the original budgeted amount. Middle column's final budget. And then it's a comparison to actual for the variance on those. So general fund is the first one. And then we really do, I know it gets relatively small here, but we pick off three or four funds per page from there until the back of the doc, of the audit report, really just showing what those comparisons are. We get that from the report that Jim's provided to us and obviously we tie it out to make sure everything jives. And then the last two pages are pension-related. It's, it's called required supplemental information. Basically, it just shows kind of a 10-year running history. It's far back as we can go from when the new accounting standards started that have those. But that feeds in at the end of the day to that 221,000 surplus. So with that said, we've, we're looking for the board's approval to issue the audit report. We do have the two letters prepared. I call them management reports, one from the board to us, basically saying that we've completed the audit as engaged. I'll send it over electronically to Jim and no rush on it. But when we get that approval, we can have the mayor and a management signature on that, as well as we've got the required communication from us as a firm to you guys as a board, just saying the inverse of that, right? We've completed the audit as engaged and the findings are really the same things that we've had in the past, just that we prepare the financial statements for you. Doesn't impact anything, not expecting a change in that regard. But for our professional standards, we just have to call out that we perform that service. So with that said, any questions or concerns?
I know I've got a question and at least one board member has a question. There was a mention in our session last week about some additional auditing requirements for the CARES Act funding.
Yep.
Is that something that's been a later date?
Yeah, I'm happy to speak to it. So from a single audit perspective, really, it's differentiated from what we were engaged to do. Our intent from talking to Jim and talking to you guys is to prepare an engagement letter to do that. The standard requirement for the federal clearinghouse for single audit money is by December 31st. They've actually extended that, just with all things COVID and everything going on. But our intent would be to get you guys an engagement letter here in the next week. And then we're going out to, and I'll be brief on this, we're going out to, you know, national conferences that we always do, where we actually get to sit in front of board members at the GAZB, ask them questions, work hand-in-hand with them and really get up to speed on any new changes in that regard. So we quite frankly, would really like to go through that process with them in October before we actually started the field work on the single audit. The relevant number as it relates to the single audit is anytime you receive and expend more than $750,000 in CARES money, or not in CARES money, in federal funds. In your instance, it is CARES money, just shy of a million dollars that was received and expended in your fiscal year. So unfortunately, that is a separate engagement. But yes, Rob, you have anything you want to add to that in terms of the color around that? You're on me, buddy.
Yeah. So the only, the only difference between the single audit, the single, your regular audit here is more of a financial audit. The single audit is more of a, what's the word I want for, more of the dynamics of it, you know?
Compliance.
Compliance audit, thank you. Where you're looking at, you know, the, the federal restrictions on the money. Did you meet the requirements of those? With the CARES money, there's not a lot of restrictions. So, so that's going to be fairly simplistic. And Jim has sent us all the documentation on all the CARES money that was distributed. And we've been through some of the initial stuff and everything looks really good. Documentation is excellent. So it's just a matter of timing and performing that audit, as I say, separate from a financial audit, so.
Understand. Thank you. Any other questions from the board?
Yes. Mr. Thomas, in your report, as it went by, where does it show on sales tax? We went through COVID. How much of a change do we have in sales tax generated?
Great question.
On that?
So this is the best view here on the statement of activities.
Can you blow that up, please?
Yep. Yes, absolutely. So here in this first column, you know, if we look later in the report, it really rolls up those top three numbers. Property taxes of 1.7 million, sales tax of 5. top three numbers, property taxes of 1.7 million, sales tax of 5.4 and franchise taxes of just over 700,000, so about 7.8, 7.9 million across those. 5.4 million was in sales taxes. Now that comes from different things, right? You've got you know, eats money that's coming in, you've got the regular sales tax that's collected. Let me give me one second here, I'll get you a comp. No, I mean, you're thinking about it the right way, right? You know, we had a shutdown, people weren't spending money as they had been. Last year it was at 5.52 million. And then this year we're at 5.48, so we actually had an increase of about $200,000. So it really didn't hit the city in the way you maybe, you know, at a high level would have thought it would have.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from the board?
Mayor, just to comment on that sales tax, that's all, that's the general sales tax, that's the sales tax for our interchange collection and the transportation sales tax and capital improvement sales tax. I think it's all of our sales tax to get that number.
That's exactly right. Yes, you're correct, Jim.
The what kind of money?
The communication money off the towers?
No, that wouldn't.
Franchise tax.
That would be, yeah.
Yeah, so, so I'm sorry to interject, but yeah, the franchise tax number here, the 753,000. That was down a little bit from 814,000, so let's call it a 65,000 decrease. You know, we do go out, like I said, after year and then grab it, you could have a little bit of a timing mechanism there, but you did see it was off just a little bit year over year.
And Nathan delivered the report to me just this afternoon and I haven't forwarded it on to you guys. But we are under a timetable that we would like you to make a formal acceptance of the report this evening, so that, I think that's what we're looking for right now is isn't that the
Yeah, the motion or something?
Just a simple motion is good enough for these guys, I think.
Board, can we entertain a motion to accept the report? Nathaniel Thomas and his firm for our financial year 2021 audit report.
Motion to approve. Second half?
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes.
Thank you very much. And thank you guys for joining us. Appreciate it very much.
Pleasure, thank you very much. Everybody have a great evening.
Okay, we'll look forward to getting a proposal from you for the single audit for the CARES funds.
Yes, sir. Thank you again.
All right, thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, to follow up, also on my report, I enclosed in the agenda packet under 4B or 4A. Actually, it should be 4B, shouldn't it? Okay, Alderman Lehman had asked us that to survey neighboring cities ordinances relative to the dangerous dog pit bull regulations. And enclosed is a copy of our dangers dog ordinance. We have both a dangerous dog ordinance and a pit bull ordinance. The pit bull ordinance was adopted in 2006, it was modeled after the city of Independence. Who borrowed it from the city of Overland Park? That ordinance has sustained Supreme Court review from several states across the country, especially the state Supreme Court of Kansas. It is a valid ordinance and is virtually unchallengeable as it stands. We have a dangerous dog ordinance, we modeled that after the city of Excelsior Springs code. Their code is similar to ours, they have Excelsior Springs has a dangerous dog procedure and a prohibition against pit bulls. And I only, I stayed within our county and the city of Kansas City. Pit bulls are permitted, but they must be spayed or neutered according to the city of Kansas City ordinance with certain exceptions. This is a trend I see in other large cities, the city of San Francisco has long held pit bulls as being an animal that must be spayed or neutered in order to have them. The city of Gladstone recently, in the past few years, changed from a prohibition, but they now permit pit bulls, but they are also declared by ordinance as dangerous dog. And that ordinance would allow only one dangerous dog per residence. And all dangerous dogs must be registered as dangers with a minimum insurance requirements, special regulations, including span and neuter. Requirements with, and also when they're out on the, out on a leash, they must be muzzled. The Liberty adopted a new, a complete new animal control ordinance in 2018. With the dangerous dog provisions, they repealed their pit bull prohibition by voters in 2019. Now, I, I don't know exactly what their stature is on their ability to hold such binding elections, but they are a special charter city. Fourth-class cities such as Carney do not have a provision for binding elections specifically for animal control. So if we hold an election for that, it would be an advisory election such as what was done with our smoking and enclosed places. So this board has has taken an issue to the voters that was not technically, you know, did not have a structure that said you shall have an ordinance for such things. We took it upon ourselves to share with the voters what we wanted to do. That can also be done, but I just, you know, there's been a citizen asking the mayor. Well, how can we make it not an advisory? How can we make it a compelling impose? Well, there is no, there is no statutory procedure because we're a fourth-class city. And if we were to change to a charter city, we could write that kind of thing into our charter. For those kinds of elections, but right now we simply have no procedure, so it would be, and you, you guys have done it before, so you know that road. Or some of us do know that road to go. The, I also enclosed the city of Smithville's ordinances. They're silent on pit bulls and they have always been silent on pit bulls. They have a vicious dog procedure that they call that and it's, it's you know, they've just never, they, you know, you can talk to their, to them about their experiences. I can only simply say that they have, they have, they have resisted that prohibition of pit bulls. Also enclosed is the International Municipal Lawyers Association Dangerous Dog Model Ordinance and these are lawyers that, you know, they, they have evaluated this and and as they say, this is an aspirational model that may not be able to even exist in real world or certainly in some cities in the form that it is in. But their interest is always trying to minimize the opportunity for litigation on, on, on issues. And so they have a discussion in the very end of it on specific legislation. And they will tell you that we have broad powers as a municipality. We've been granted by the state of Missouri to regulate dogs and animals. And that is, that is as broad as it is in most of the country. And there are some 21 states now that are prohibiting the cities from adopting British specific language, but the state of Missouri is not one. They, that is a bill that gets introduced every year at the House for the last, I don't know, a string of years and it gets derailed and I imagine even Kansas City would not be for limiting that because they do specify that pit bull ownership requires being spayed or neutered and they would not be able to say that if they lost that power, so you know, I think as long as the big hitters like Kansas City or, you know, pay lobbyists like Don Jefferson City will continue to educate legislatures on that, so. That is my, that is my report. I wanted you to hear those things. Mr. Mayor. I don't know what you want to do with it from here on out, but that's certainly what our neighbors are, they're quite a diverse group. I appreciate you taking the time to make that research at the request of the board. We do continue to get requests from the residents to consider making a change to our current ordinance. I think there's at least two or three emails that I have received that we always include in the packets from today. That being said, what's the board's desire if anything at this time regarding our research in the ordinance?
I think it's appropriate to hold a public hearing so we can can listen to our constituents. Give them an opportunity to, whether it's for or against it. I think, I think I would like to see a public hearing scheduled and I think you know, when Excelsior Springs is the only one that strictly prohibits pit bulls besides us. You know, Kansas City and Gladstone says that they have to be spayed and neutered. But, and I don't have a problem with that. If, if an ordinance does come into play and that's put in there, I don't have a problem with span and neuter. I think that's in some cases a responsible ownership. So I would, I would like to see a public hearing scheduled on it to give our constituents an opportunity to speak openly in public about it.
Any other feedback from the board?
Yes, I disagree with David a little bit on this. For one thing, we are Carney, so it's, we kind of get to do what we want, but by putting out the public hearing type thing, that's, that's almost like saying, hey, we're wanting to make some changes. The question really needs to be before we do that is the board, do we really want to make changes? Is it something that board members would be in favor of making changes on? I personally, I'll put it out there, I'm not in favor of changing the dog ordinance. We've, we've had some people who have been terribly bitten in this town. And we've had some people who you know, the pit bull will be friendly for a while and just take one little thing and all of a sudden it's a much worse bite than say a little terrier or a dachshund or something like that, so I'm not in favor of changing the ordinance. But by putting it out there of saying, hey, we want to do a a public hearing, it almost implies that we as a board do want to do something. So before there was a public hearing, I think it'd be good to know, does the board even really want to entertain that?
I have to say, I also, as we sit today, am not in favor of this. And I personally grew up with a pit bull. I've told this story many times. But I would like to, this is something maybe down the road, once we actually have an animal control officer in our community and we have some things that are more in place, maybe we could readdress it. But I don't think this is something right now that I could wrap my head around for similar reasons that Dan said.
I think at this time, I think I would have to concur with Jerry, I feel like I'm not opposed to changing the ordinance. But I don't think at this time the city is, is set up to do that. We need an animal control officer, if, especially I think if we look at the ordinance, then we might need to require registration fees and we would need to have somebody that could, you know, look at complaints and things like that. And that's just a a big burden on our current police department that we don't need to add to their, to their list. So I think, I don't, I don't want to say this is over, but I think at this time unless we can bring in an animal control officer, I don't think I want to do any, make any changes at this time.
So appreciate the feedback, I suppose, for directions. Lehman, did you want to make a motion to to vote of the board for a public hearing on the topic?
I will put that in the form of a motion to to hold a public hearing on the pit bull ban. To go back to a vicious dog, dangerous dog ordinance, but to get rid of the pit bull ban.
So if I understand your motion correctly, you want to make a motion to have a public hearing? I assume at our next public meeting, the first Board of Aldermen meeting next month? Do you consider to give residents the opportunity to voice their opinion if they're for or against repealing our current pit bull ban ordinance and dangerous dog ordinance?
That's correct.
What do you hear? Motion on the table? Do we have a second? If nobody called for a second, motion dies. Move on to public hearings and remember item 6B was sorry, public request and petition.
We do, yes, thank you. Mr. Mayor, enclosed in 5A of the agenda is a memo from David Pavlich recommending the acceptance of a letter of credit from Dear Vale for the completion of some improvements. In order that building permits may be issued in Cottonwood Estates fourth plat. We have a procedure to allow that to occur by ordinance and it requires you all to make that approval. And Craig was in today and said that that, that letter of credit is
Has been submitted. We have it in hand, yes. It would cover sidewalk trail improvements along the third and fourth plats. They're waiting for a plaque clay electric. Do some power crossing there, they don't want to have the, the trail torn out after being constructed. They are in a position where pretty soon they'd like to record the final plat, we're waiting on some as-built drawings. Final plat drawings will be coming in soon, so they're pretty close to wanting to move forward and
That's that, Lehman has a reasonable request.
We've done that before, yep, as long as that performance guarantee is
This is a, is an unqualified guaranteed letter of credit that that there's no conditions on, we can make claim to it, is it in the form that we have?
Anytime.
Yeah.
It's got an expiration date in a year, but the improvements will be done at that time. And actually, after those improvements are done, then it will transfer it into a maintenance bond.
And that was delivered here today?
Yes, it was dropped out.
Do we need to make copies of it? Should the board see it or is a motion?
We just say it's an amount of 22,500 or so dollars to cover the sidewalk trail along Nation Road.
Questions from the board on this? Need a simple motion?
A simple motion for the record of the ordinance.
Yeah, we can, we can have a motion to approve the Dear Valley Letter of Credit Acceptance for Cottonwood Estates fourth plat.
Make a motion to approve?
A second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes.
Mr. Mayor, Kurt Hamilton is working on with the city of Carney, or city of Carney Park Department to relocate the annual Jim Bach Memorial Oktoberfest. Celebration to the downtown area of Carney from the Jesse James Pavilion's location. The event would take place on Saturday, October the 2nd. The events being planned would run from 10 a.m. to 10 p.m. But that's not, the alcohol is being requested from 2 p.m. to 10 p.m., is that right?
Correct.
And do you want to come up and speak on this? We also have Larry Pratt here who is going to assist by, he represents the Knights of Columbus. Who's always gotten the liquor license for us and handled the event for us at the pavilion, so maybe you can explain how all this is going to work and how we're going to contain that area. I've given them a copy of your general plan. And we understand Matt Brantner has already looked at it, is that right?
Yeah, he's already modified our license.
Modified your license, so we've passed muster with the state, with the state liquor control. We're going to lose here, I'm afraid. We're going to lose here, I'm afraid. He's going to a private sector.
He'll be connected.
Okay.
Welcome, Mr. Hamilton.
Thank you, and thank you for having me. So, yes, we, I just want to give you a little update of what we're planning for Oktoberfest. It's kind of a fun collaboration now between not only the City of Kearney, but also the Kearney Food Pantry and the Fulfillment House. So, as we know, Oktoberfest is originally down at the Jesse James Amphitheater, but we thought it might be fun to move it back downtown and to capture some of the business revenue again and to showcase some of the new and upcoming things that we have going on in downtown Kearney. So, originally, we had Fun Fest that was going on in the second weekend and Oktoberfest in the first weekend, so Oktoberfest is an opportunity to kind of bring that all together. And in that idea and thought process, the fun starts at 10 o'clock. The Kids Carnival will be a portion that's all along Washington Street, so on East Washington on our side, there'll be inflatables from carnival time. That's the generous donation the City of Kearney is making towards the event, and we appreciate that greatly. But along with other inflatables being provided on the west side, along with some face painting, some fun sign making for the kids with a plastic cup with a snow cone inside of, instead of maybe an adult beverage.
I hope so.
Yeah. But along with a stage that's being brought in by, you know, local TV productions with Josh McKinsey, which will be doing local performances with Studio 320, Our Golden Girls. There'll be a keg tapping with a member of the Jim Bach family to recognize that memorial and to keep that tradition moving forward as well. And then in Lions Park, there'll be free family activities. The events on Washington Street will be a fundraiser for the three charities mentioned before. Washington Street provides an opportunity for families if they want a free opportunity. So, there'll be some other activities going on there as well, along with some live music. And then Old Church Plaza will be having some more adult entertainment, but also some kids things with a digital scavenger hunt, a pie eating contest, and some cornhole tournaments. So, all focused on kids from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. in all three locations. 2:00 is kind of the shift, and that's kind of when we start more of the adult and the alcohol portion of the event. So, we do have barriers that will be enclosed the area, so we will be shutting down Washington Street on both sides, leaving 33 open for, you know, traffic to continue moving forward. And then closing off then Old Church Plaza, along with First and Second Streets, to kind of encapsulate the areas and make it safe for all the participants that will be walking around in each of the areas. So, in that 2:00 portion, we will have live music. There's three sets going on with your German polka music going on in Lions Park and Washington Street. And then on Washington Street transforms into more of a millennial kind of hipster vibe with our second artist, and then funk syndicates our headliner, which is more classic and a little bit more rock that's going on at 8:30. A lot of live music going on, along with Oktoberfest festivities with sign holding, keg toss, keg rolling. There's a beard contest, which is why you see this inscription on my face that I'm ready to shave off already. But a lot of fun activities, along with our second Saturday's event that the Kearney and Richmond Council has had a lot of success with, that'll be in Lions Park from 3:00 to 9:00 p.m. So, a lot of local entrepreneurship going on in the evening, and with cities kind of closing it out with some local music as well. So, just a great event and great opportunity to really showcase a lot of the downtown businesses, along with raise money for a lot of charities. We do have the procedures and volunteers in place to make sure that we're taking, you know, safe, everything safely. We do have a committee of about 15 people, along with, we'll have about 30, 40 volunteers on duty, let alone the Knights providing all our alcohol, which they bring their own little army of volunteers and staff as well. So, there'll be about 80 of us working the events as well, along with City of Kearney Police keeping us safe and monitoring the area as well, so.
Has been included in your meetings.
Correct. Yep. So, Eric and Ryan have been included in the meetings, Larry's been included in the meetings, all the charity heads, and along with one of my downtown committees, the organization committee. So, we made sure that everybody was at the table, so that way everybody knew what was going on, and we're excited to see, you know, a great event that's been around for nine years and put a different twist on it and bring it back to our downtown.
Any questions from the board on the request?
Any polka bands?
From 2:00 to 4:00 on Washington Street, and then from the Brian McCarthy Band from 2:00 to 6:00 in Lions Park. So, from 2:00 to 4:00, all you actually get is polka. So, I think that's going to be one of the most busy times and one of the most authentic times that we want to, the time to be...
Obviously, the board graciously approved a temporary change in our liquor ordinance to allow this event in downtown Kearney, open container in a controlled area, and I'm really excited to see this continue to grow.
I'm very enthusiastic. I've heard a lot of buzz, generating some good feelings out there. It'd be fabulous.
We could entertain a motion to approve the issuance of the liquor license permit for the October 2nd event.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Passes, congratulations.
Thank you, and thank you for including us.
Thank you.
Now, we're at a public hearing.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Just a reminder, item 6B has been removed. I have requests from the House, and we only have two items of discussion this evening.
Mr. Mayor, enclosed in 6A is a proposed ordinance based on the state auditor's calculations using the latest assessment figures from the Clay County Clerk, which are also enclosed. A public hearing is scheduled for this evening, and after that hearing, it is recommended the board consider the enclosed proposed ordinance.
This time, we will open the floor to anybody on Zoom, because there is nobody here in the audience, at which is to be for or against the proposed ordinance. Call the floor open. Nobody move, close the floor. Any discussion, comments from the board? Can we read by title only, on the first reading, please?
I will, Mr. Mayor. I will note that we had a reset, this is reassessment year, and so you're going to see a substantial rollback on our general levy. I hope it turns into savings, but we don't know this until for each reassessment, it would be different.
About a nickel.
Four cents, 4.74 cents is what the exact amount is. So, the ordinance reads as, "An ordinance fixing the rate of tax levy on all taxable property within the City of Kearney, Missouri for the year 2021 pursuant to State Statute RSMO 67.110." Make a motion to approve on first reading?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The ordinance's second reading, title only, please.
An ordinance fixing the rate of tax levy on all taxable property within the City of Kearney, Missouri for the year 2021 pursuant to State Statute RSMO 67.110.
Make a motion?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Full of word, please.
Alderman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderman Holt?
Aye.
Alderman Lehman?
Aye.
Alderman Barker?
Aye.
We're both unanimous, Mr. Mayor.
Move on to the next item, this evening, another public hearing.
It is for, a public hearing has been scheduled this evening for consideration for a request from the City of Kearney for conditional use permit for its proposed salt storage building at 504 East 19th Street, tabled from the August the 9th meeting. The Planning and Zoning Commission continued a public hearing to their September the 13th meeting, at which time the commission unanimously voted to recommend approval of a conditional use permit for a salt storage building, subject to conditions, including a landscape plan and some fencing to better isolate the city's property from Stone Lake subdivision. See enclosed minutes. After conclusion of this hearing, the board may elect to consider the proposed ordinance.
If you wish to speak for or against the proposed conditional use permit for the City of Kearney salt storage, have you moved forward, state your name and address for the record. Call the floor open. Nobody move, we'll close the floor. Any additional feedback from staff or Alderman Barker? Alderman Barker, our planning and representing.
None, really. I did pull up the site plan on the screen, if you wanted to look at that. We'd be located next to, on the backside of the existing building. We'd have drive off of the existing drive that allowed vehicles to turn around, back in, dump the load, same with loading trucks and unloading salt trucks as well. We do also have a landscape plan that was prepared after the...
Can you hold that up real big, Damon?
Trying to do that.
All we see is the map.
Oh.
Well, I know how that happens.
There we go. Sorry about that.
We think we can build a berm along the...
Yes.
That berm is going to be where those planting are, right?
Right, yeah. We don't have the height of the berm yet, but there will be a berm in that location. Basically, what they did is they took our landscape buffering requirement for when you have a residential property up against a non-residential property. You have a certain number of plant units that you plant, and that's how they came up with that landscape plan, so there's...
Is that where we paid Chris Riley to put the street sweepper clean out?
No, it's on farther north. Do we have, do we have that on the map, or can't you get a map to show?
I can go to Google Earth. Yeah, we can go to Google Earth.
If you go to Google Earth, I'd like to show them where we'd like to build a fence.
If you can see the hand, so this is the entire property, the salt storage building would go approximately this location with the driveway coming down to the south. Landscape burn, and burn would follow along this road entrance here.
Know him where that clean out is? Do you know where that is?
I don't, I don't.
It's that bright white concrete box.
Nope, on the other side, I'm taking...
Oh, right here.
Yeah, can you make that any bigger, David? Because I'd like to show them where J.D. Power used to live, where the swimming pool is. And he had a privacy fence, PVC privacy fence. When we started using that for a recycling center, we paid 100% of privacy fence through the back of the next neighbor, right next to us. We've also got the neighbor to the north of that person that has asked, come and asked us to build that privacy fence on down. What happens is, a lot of the recycling will get these little Walmart bags, you know, Tri-Strapper bags that want to take flight, and little bits of litter from our recycling center more than anything else. But she's asked if we'd build a privacy fence there. I think it's very important that we be the best of neighbors, since our use is not the friendliest around, we want to be the best neighbor we can, and I recommend we...
Could you just include that proposal in when we approve it?
We can include that in there. That'll cost us more money, but I think it's very important that we try to do that.
But that makes sense.
Would that fence also be a vinyl fence?
Yes. And I know that's going to end up bending around where it's north-south, and it's going to be, you know, those winds can really take them on, I understand that, but we...
So, we're going to have to put buttresses on them or something?
We'll do have to, I don't know, when we do the north-south...
Probably have to go to four-by-four post with a vinyl wrap, basically, on it.
I got you.
Instead of having just vinyl pole, now you're going to have a four-by-four post with a vinyl wrap on it. And that makes it meet the wind load.
I agree that being a good neighbor and creating, generating some goodwill is a good thing.
Yeah.
We're also a good neighbor, we go home at night, and so, you know, but at the same time, I can appreciate what's happening, where the litter blows, especially in the north-south, you know.
We may go home, but the wind doesn't.
The wind doesn't.
Well, I know it'll be nice to have sufficient salt storage, so when we're telling our street crews to salt, 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 salt.
Well, no, we really don't know. I'm going to have to come back for probably...
Any other questions or items of discussion from the board?
I'm assuming that we would tie into both existing fences?
Yeah, I think we'll go clear over to the trail.
And you want me to zoom back in, Jim?
Yeah.
It looks like there's a fence.
So, there's the exist, this is the existing fence?
And this is a...
Ends here.
Right.
So, then we extend around...
Her fence is a, is a kind of a farm wire weave fence, I think, without any barbs. But she has dogs, and so I would think we'll build on our side of the fence and then remove her fence, is what I'd recommend, because we don't want two fences, you get Woody screwing up.
So, you would put it on the property line?
Yes, I'm pretty sure that that fence that's built was, the city had built it on a property line, so we're going to be really close to the property line. We'll just build it right up next to it, then pull it out, and I'm pretty sure we had built that.
And you're saying you'd take it all the way to the trail?
Take it all the way to the trail. Well, where that hand is, that's where I would take it.
That's the property line.
That's what I mean.
Okay.
Well, it does make kind of sense to go to the trail if we're blowing trash in that pond, we've blown stuff in that pond.
Well, I don't know about that. I'll have to consult with these guys. I think that'll catch most of it, as you can see, our, it goes well beyond, I mean, the brush, what do you think, Don?
Don, does any of the trash get the pond?
Trash in there, but I wouldn't say it was from us. But it would make sense for it to go all the way to the trail, almost.
Where it bends around?
We'll look at it.
I think, yeah, that's a good staff level discussion, and we'll be awaiting your report.
All right. Mr. Mayor, you've held a public hearing, have we opened the floor for the comments?
No.
Okay.
Oh, they did.
Forty minutes.
Yeah, I opened it closing and gave staff the opportunity to...
Okay, Mr. Mayor, enclosed is a proposed ordinance that we'd ask the board to consider.
Can you read it, first reading, title only, please?
An ordinance granting a conditional use permit at 502 East 19th Street, allowing a public facility, salt storage building in an R1 low-density residential district.
I make a motion to approve with additional fence across the back property lines to the walking trail.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Second reading by title only, please.
An ordinance granting a conditional use permit at 502 East 19th Street, allowing a public facility, salt storage building in an R1 low-density residential district.
With fence all the way to the walking trail.
You're going to have to make that motion again.
I make a motion with fence all the way to the walking trail.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Full of word, please.
Alderman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderman Holt?
Aye.
Alderman Lehman?
Aye.
Alderman Barker?
Aye.
We're both unanimous, Mr. Mayor.
There's no old business to discuss this evening, no new business, we'll move on to Alderman discussion. Alderman Barker?
I would just like to thank all of the people who were involved in the Jesse James Festival this weekend, all of the volunteers, I suspect in the hundreds of people who were out there to make that a nice event for the community. And I want to add that there are opportunities for people in this community everywhere to volunteer. You're welcome to volunteer to your church, or the city will take people to help pick up trash, or the Rotary is looking for people, the Chamber's looking for people. Part of what makes this community so special is that we have people who are involved in these things and want to make our community a better place. If you see something you don't like, volunteer to be a part of it. Don't be part of the problem by just complaining that you didn't like the way something happened. Get involved, make it, make a change. And so, I invite everybody to find some kind of way to give back to the community, and you'll find that you get a lot more back than you give the community.
Good message. Alderman Lehman?
I'd just like to reiterate, Alderman Barker said about the festival, I had a nephew and niece in from Phoenix, Arizona, and she is a born and raised in San Diego, California, and they're actually talking about moving to the Midwest, and so, we took them out there, and my niece had never had a phone cake.
Really?
Never had a phone cake, didn't know what we were talking about, I said, we're going to go out there and figure it out.
Cool.
And so, we walked around the park, they were very, very, they thought the park was really neat. We were out there, big balloon, or the big kites were flying, and, you know, watching these huge kites up in the air and how many people it took to hold on to those things as the wind was blowing, but it was really, really cool to see from an outside perspective of a festival that's gone on for 50 years. You know, I've lived here all my life, and I'll be the first to admit, I kind of take it for granted. It's always... It's always been there. And to see, to see the, the glow and the excitement of, of, you know, they'd never seen Bud, sand, volleyball, whatever that was, you know, so we even walked back where the, the dog park's going. And so it was, it was really neat to see the, the excitement from somebody outside and, and somebody that's actually thinking about moving to Midwest and to the, this general vicinity. And they, they actually went to the, the rodeo that night, and so she had never seen... No, she had never seen a rodeo. I talked to her about bull riding, and she said, "Why? Why would you get on the back of a mean bull and try to ride it?" And it was like, well, you'd have to ask them that. But it was, it was really neat to see a different perspective on a, on a festival that my nephew made to come, and he's, when I told him it was Jesse James Festival, he's like, wait, I thought he was a bank robber. But he was, but he's from, he's, he's from Carney, and, and so next time they're here, we've already made plans to go out to the Jesse James Farm and, and look at that. So it was really cool, so.
Anything else?
Nope.
Alderman Holt?
Kind of along the same lines with Kathy, but not necessarily about the festival, but about how cool people are in this town. Saturday, I got in on the tail end of an accident that happened right in front of Fun Farm. And a person was turning into Fun Farm, and a person who was going to the festival, like, I take it, wasn't paying attention and ran into the rear end of this other car. But what was amazing was how many people stopped to help. Everybody wanted to make sure that everybody was okay. Oh, the ambulance and the police officers, they got there. Larry probably could tell you, probably monitors it, but when people got there, a lot of people were, were there. One lady was like wanting to get out of her car, and they're like, no, we're going to wait for all the ambulance, we're going to deal stuff. And other people were directing traffic to try to get things kind of smoothed out, get some people to go through the park instead of going up there, all before the police ever got there. And I thought that was really cool, how our community really stood tall right there to take care of the person, but also take care of other people to get them to, to where they needed to go. And I just think that says a lot for our community of how, of how they did that. It was really neat.
Anything else? Alderman Spencer?
You know, I think you guys have all covered it. I, I wholeheartedly agree. What a wonderful weekend for our community, and I think we put our best foot forward for not only our locals, but also a lot of our out-of-towners. So kudos and thank you to all those volunteers that made this weekend possible.
Before we adjourn, if there's a motion to do so, I did intend to mention this evening earlier, but last week, this involved a pastor and his wife and little girl of the Carney Bible Church. They are from Oskaloosa, Kansas, and I mention that because before they got the call to come serve in our, in our Carney community, just a short month or so ago, they knew about Carney. Because, guess how? Splash pad.
Oh, really?
They actually had, they said they'd known several people from that part of Kansas that would take a weekend trip to Carney, first splash pad, get involved with the events downtown, and knew about Jesse James Park and our trails, and they mentioned some of the restaurants. And in that same day, Eric, what city did you say you were meeting with or where do you live?
Leavenworth.
City what? Smithville has, has been over here looking at our park as well, but Leavenworth, Kansas was over here viewing our park because they had heard good things about it.
And they want to put in a splash park, and they toured Excelsior's, and there's a research situation that we went against, and they heard nothing but problems from Excelsior that they couldn't regulate, get the chemicals correct, and it was shut down a bunch. So they liked our facility, and we have given them information on, on who ours was, was done by, and so on and so forth.
A couple mentioned, you know, some of the nice boutique shops we have in town, so it's just, I, I enjoyed hearing that, you know, all of our work to make Carney a destination and to, to give us, you know, kind of niche things that set us apart is, is being noticed already. So kudos to everybody involved. Steph, can we entertain a motion to adjourn our meeting?
Still moved?
Second that.
The fence thing goes along with the walking trail.
Good job, Mr. Mayor.